We can't supervise kids. And as we looked at the decision of our numbers coming in, what we see is that a majority of our positive cases are coming from our adolescent population. They're mixing a little bit more in the community. They're out with friends. And so as we moved into Monday and looking at consulting with nurses and looking those tests came in, we just decided it was best to hit pause for this week, knowing that there was a high transmission rate over the weekend that was reported to us. And we just did not have the staffing available to think that we could hold it together for a week. Because we know that it's hard for families and for students to not know on a day-by-day basis. And you can get a decision that comes in at 6:30 in the morning, and that makes it hard. We value in-person learning. We know that that is what is best for our students, and we're going to do everything that we can to make sure that we can stay in school. But when you also think about school, it's more than just teachers, principals. You have to think about food service. You have to think about your custodial staff. You have to think about your bus-driving staff. And if we need to, we're going to do our best to make sure that our elementary schools are supplied with enough staff to stay open, because we know that's so challenging for parents. Another piece that we'll have is that today, I worked with a local supplier, those local Hyperlite, and we had used some of those masks a year or so ago, and we bought 10,000 more today to share between the two communities, because they have a really good nose piece, and they seem to fit pretty tight to the face, so we can tighten those strings up for kiddos. And then that way, if we have masks that kids need at school, we'll have more on hand. And then, you know, again, I can't say enough to families and to staff, if you're not feeling well, stay home. Contact us. We can help you with testing if we need to. We know that testing is difficult to acquire in the community, becoming more difficult for schools. But we'll do everything that we can to make sure that we provide that first level of health care for kiddos. Secondly, just again, thank our school nurses. It's been a rough couple of weeks. Principals who are out there helping to test. Anybody who's available today at Saco Middle School. I know that Joan was sitting out front, and parents were doing drive-up if they were in a positive pool, and we'll continue to provide that support as needed. So a lot going on COVID-wise. One of the other things that we are still working on is pushing the building project forward. We've had a couple of meetings as we returned from vacation, and the last one was a site committee meeting, where we are starting to talk more about the sites that are out there that are available for us to use. I want to thank two members of the committee in particular, and that's Dawn Pylon and Kevin Roach, who just have a lot of knowledge about our community and about what some of the sites are, and kind of have their ear to the ground. Because one of the challenges with sites in Saco is that if you have a nice piece of land, that piece of land is very desirable. And so we have tentatively scheduled a February 2nd meeting for the community to talk about what those, some of those sites would look like. Because depending on grade level configuration, you might have different requirements for the size of the site. So if you had 800 students in a school, that would require a different amount of acreage than if you had 400 students in a school. So you'll have to do some mixing and matching. We have not selected where that will be yet, because obviously, depending on virus and all of those pieces of where we are as a community, looking at space, room, et cetera, or even if it will be best to have it that night, we've got to consider that piece. So, any questions?
Thank you Superintendent Ray. Any questions for Superintendent Ray? No questions. Moving on to item eight, the chair report. Chair LaFortune?
I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Brings us to item nine. There are no staff reports indicated in the agenda. That moves us on to item 10. Same, there are no board subcommittee meeting minutes to review. That brings us to item 11, which is old business. Item A, adopting policy JLF, JLF-E and JLF-R. Motion to approve the policies?
Mr. Mayor?
School Board Member Johnston?
I move we accept policies JLF, reporting child abuse and neglect; JLF-E, suspected child abuse/neglect form; and JLF-R, reporting child abuse/neglect administrative regulation.
Second?
Motion's been made by School Board Member Johnston, second by School Board Member Truman. Discussion on the policies? School Board Member Gale?
I just had a couple of quick, quick things. One, just an observation that I think what was, what's before us, I just want to get a little bit of clarity, is a sample administrative procedure and sample policies from the main school management association. So I think maybe inadvertently, or the assumption is that this will be updated to reflect Saco, and some of the stuff will be removed. That's not applicable. The other, the other item, I think I would like to maybe make a motion to amend the policy specifically to the training of policy JLF on page four. The policy as written here notes that any school unit employee who is required to make a report shall at least once every four years complete the mandated training approved by DHHS. Yet in the section two subsection A on page one, it says, "Any employee of the school unit who knows or has reason to suspect that a child has been or is likely to be abused or neglected must immediately notify the building principal or designated agent." So I'd like to make an amendment to this policy for clarity that all school employees shall complete mandated approved, mandated training approved by DHHS at least once every four years, as required by law, and then add, and within three months of hire, to ensure that new hires are required to complete the training within a reasonable period of time once they get hired.
Motion's been made by School Board Member Gale to amend item, excuse me, policy JLF, subsection?
Subsection seven.
Subsection seven, training on page four, to add in and within three months of hiring. Is there a second to the motion for amendment?
Just one point of clarification. It's, in addition to that, within three months of hiring, it's all school employees.
So change any school unit employee to all school unit employees?
Correct.
All?
All.
School unit employees. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second, for the purpose of discussion.
Amendment's been made by School Board Member Gale, second by School Board Member LaFortune. Any discussion?
So the
School Board Chair?
The question that I have is, with this, even though it says sample policy on the one that we have, it was my understanding that this is required from the state, and that it basically comes to us verbatim, and has been, you know, run through all of the legal processes it needs to run through to get it into this form. So I guess the question I have is, do we have the latitude to make an amendment to the language like that?
You certainly have the latitude to make that amendment. But this is the policy that comes to us from main school management that would say, this is what their recommendation is to us. What I would recommend is that while your policy says this, you may have a hiring procedure that looks like something else that's not in that policy, that the procedure for hiring would be to have that done as part of the onboarding process. And watching those pieces, I don't, I, you know, this is what comes from main school management, this is what I'd recommend in that policy. We can have a procedure for onboarding that says, this happens at this amount of time or at this rate.
I have a question, it's a follow-up. Can we pass it as it is and then take it up for review in the strategic committee to decide if we amend it further or add it to the hiring policies?
Yes, you could do that, certainly. We can review that. They're having a meeting next Wednesday night, and we could add this one to the A's list. I just feel very strongly that this policy needs to be on the books for us.
That's kind of why I was leading that way, just to make sure that we get this on the books. And then we can then take it up for review to make it more in-depth, if necessary.
Any further discussion?
Just a follow-up.
On the amendment?
Just a follow-up question to
Mr. Mayor?
Discussion we were having around the onboarding now. Do you know off the top of your head, Jeremy, if we have such things built into onboarding, where we have assumptions or expectations of completion of certain required trainings and things like that for employees?
So, so we have videos that people watch for training videos when they're onboarding, but I can only speak to what I saw this summer. I could not speak to what has normally happened over the process. You know, again, as you look at teaching positions, typically those are pretty stagnant and steady throughout a year. When we have positions like ed techs that can turn, or hourly employees, they can turn over rather quickly. And so I would want to have a greater conversation about what the capacity and what the plan would be. Because if you put a thing like three months in, I think that we would want to have a time where we would say, okay, how do we map out the calendar so that you pick a date on whatever day to say anyone who was hired during these times hits this orientation session and so on for us? So I think it would take some planning to do something like that, Kevin.
School Board Member Johnston?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm just trying to follow, I'm just trying to follow this conversation in terms of, I do think we need to get these policies on the books. And I do think that the concept of making a certain timeline around when new employees are trained, and this is very important, but I'm just going to ask the superintendent, maybe he said it, I don't know, would you recommend that we add, Mr. Superintendent, this three-month requirement? Or are you suggesting that we just go ahead and do it as the sample policy indicates, and come back and review it as Sarah had suggested?
I am going to say that you need, that this policy is about 10 years too late, and that we definitely need to get this on the books. And if we want to add that other piece, I would like to have the time to say, is it part of this policy, or is it about a policy on onboarding that may be a standalone, which we can review in two weeks at a meeting? I think that we should have reporting and reviews one way or the other. This needs to get on the books.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Superintendent Ray, just a question. Because this is a sample, I mean, this is something that they send out to all municipalities that participate, and you do have, much like contracts, you have the ability to build upon the floor but not go below the floor. This policy would act as the floor, as prescribed by the MSMA. Is that correct?
Yes, you can always build upon them. You can add others. You can sample those things. My, ones that are required by law are ones that I will always recommend to go with what that sample policy is, so that you don't inadvertently create something that's in conflict with the law or those pieces that puts our, again, this is about protecting our employees here and making sure they know what the backbone is and what the requirements are. Because there are some pieces in there that if things aren't reported correctly, we won't need to make sure that there's a clear outline of what needs to happen next, so that they're protected as they've done their, they provided what they needed to do to administration.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment only, on the amendment only? School Board Member Gale?
Yeah, and I guess that's kind of the intent of this. It's, you know, this, what we have in front of us is the floor. The training says once every four years for mandated reporters. But the amendment that I'm trying to get at is, in this policy, we say that all employees are required to report if they suspect child abuse or neglect. But not all employees are required to take the training, only the mandated reporters are. So we want to protect, number one, our children, number two, the employees. So without the proper training for all employees, it leaves our children at risk and then also, you know, us at risk. So I guess I'd be glad to take this up in two weeks, but I do feel strongly that, you know, we need to do something a little more than just once every four years for mandated reporters.
School Board Member LaFortune?
All I was, I was just going to reiterate that there is a, there is an MSMA review that's underway right now, and that we're getting documents that have, that they've identified as being either missing or needing adjustments. And this one is in a section, I know at the time when this came in, that they hadn't even reviewed yet. It was, it's just one that's been known to be a gap for a long time that we haven't had. I suspect that at some point, given how thin the personnel section is, section G, that when we do get, and I know I'm speculating at this point, but when we do get the full list of work that'll be coming through the policy committee, that there may in fact be something that we can anticipate seeing around how the guidelines are laid out for, you know, expectations of the school department to ensure that people are trained. But I totally agree with the path that you're taking.
Any further discussion on the amendment only? Amendment only? Roll call vote on the amendment only? School Board Member Archie?
Yes.
School Board Member Preble?
Yes.
School Board Member Richard?
No.
School Board Member LaFortune?
Yes.
School Board Member Gale?
Yes.
School Board Member Truman?
This is just on the amendment?
On the amendment only?
No.
And School Board Member Johnston?
No.
Amendment passes for three. Back to the main motion as amended. Main motion as amended, so that, the main motion is to approve all three policies. JLF, JLF-E and JLF-R. And JLF is as amended. Any discussion on approving the policies? School Board Member LaFortune?
So this is probably a question to Jeremy as well as the full board. So if we approve this with the amended change, is this going to require us to follow up within that period of time to ensure that everyone that perhaps has been hired at the beginning of the school year is trued up on that training?
I think, I think we have some concerns about whether the training has ever occurred appropriately. And so we are going to have training, it's, once we have a policy, we are going to make sure that people have training on this reporting policy. So I just think, again, what I'm going to say is, we've got to have the floor, and then we've got to have training. And so whether it's within three months or on, we have videos that people can watch for this. It just needs to occur, and I need to have the policy in place so that I can make sure that we are following the policy and not only following the policy, but have an ability to start a recording and tracking process for all of this. If that makes sense.
So Superintendent Ray, with the importance of getting these policies just on the books, it's fair to say that training is going to occur anyway, regardless, once the policy is put out there. So the three-month window really has no bearing, as everybody will be entitled to go through that policy change as we put the new policy on the books.
That is correct, because the policy talks about every four years, and without, with the absence of the policy, we don't necessarily know what the tracking would have been to ensure that this has happened.
Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? On the main motion as amended? Roll call vote? School Board Member Archie?
Yes.
School Board Member Preble?
Yes.
School Board Member Richard?
Yes.
School Board Member LaFortune?
Yes.
School Board Member Gale?
Yes.
School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Adopting policies JLF as amended, JLF-E and JLF-R, pass 7-0. Brings us to item 12, new business. Item A is new hires. You should have seen in your packet a memorandum of new hires. Superintendent Ray, is there anything further to add on that?
No, there are no action on those items.
Any questions from the school board on the new hires? Seeing no questions, moving on to item B, resignations. There was also a memo in your packet that talks about staff resignations. Superintendent Ray, is there anything to add?
No, nothing to resignations.
Any questions from the board? Moving on from resignations, brings us to item C, nomination of interim principal at SMS. Superintendent Ray?
Yes, so I have a recommendation to appoint Jeff Rodman as the interim principal at Saco Middle School. If you all remember Jeff from last year, Jeff served a full year as the interim principal at Young School, did a fabulous job for us, and he has expressed interest in returning into this position. As we looked at the availability of candidates and when they can start, we know that we had a great track record with having Jeff here last year. He's someone who knows the system, Saco, and the players coming in mid-year. And so Jeff has 23 years of experience as a middle school principal in Kennebunk, Falmouth and Wells, and I think he will be an excellent choice to fill up, to fill the rest of the year at SMS.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the nomination of Jeff Rodman for SMS interim principal?
Mr. Mayor?
School Board Member Truman?
I move we approve the nomination of Jeff Rodman, interim Saco Middle School principal, and issue a contract for the remainder of the 21, 22 school year.
Second?
Motion's been made by School Board Member Truman, second by School Board Member Preble. Roll call vote? School Board Member Archie?
Yes.
School Board Member Preble?
Yes.
School Board Member Richard?
Yes.
School Board Member LaFortune?
Yes.
School Board Member Gale?
Yes.
School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to approve the nomination of interim principal for Saco Middle School of Jeff Rodman. Item D is BDE committee assignments. School Board, Chair LaFortune?
Mr. Mayor, so we have just come through an election and have two new board members. Earlier in the fall, as a result of some vacancies, we backfilled a few of the openings. And so now that we've got a full complement of a seven-member school board, I've received some feedback and requests from several of the school board members. And so what I have here is what is ultimately the final or final version of what the committee layout will be. I've tried to make it such that everyone has got two, and it actually works out that every single school board member will have two committees, with the exception of myself, who is not on any officially. So going down the list, on finance, the committee will be Jeff Richard and Beth Johnston, who are currently on the committee, and I will be adding William Gale in place of Jennifer Preble. The strategic committee, which is primarily the policy committee, is Beth Johnston and Sarah Truman, who are currently on there already. And I'm moving William Gale there in place of Jeff Richard. Infrastructure and facilities is currently Jennifer Preble, and I'm going to replace Beth Johnston with Jeff Richard and Sarah Truman with Arthur Archie. And the last standing committee is personnel, which currently has Sarah Truman, Jennifer Preble, and I'll be replacing Jeff Richard with Arthur Archie. So the final list is, finance is William Gale, Jeff Richard and Beth Johnston. Strategic is Beth Johnston, Sarah Truman and William Gale. Infrastructure is Jeff Richard, Jennifer Preble and Arthur Archie. Personnel is Arthur Archie, Sarah Truman and Jennifer Preble. And that will make it such that each of you have two committee assignments, which should make it a little more manageable for all of the board to attend all these committees. The next committee meeting, as I'm aware, is policy, the strategic policy committee, which will be meeting on the 26th at 4:00 PM. And I believe the plan was for that committee to meet at the back table in the auditorium here on that date.
Thank you, School Board Chair LaFortune. Any questions for the chair regarding committee assignments? School Board Chair LaFortune, you will be sending that out, I'm sure, in an email to all school board members?
I will. And the other thing that we need to do ultimately is add that to the school website. The committee page is just a general page right now and doesn't have a listing of what any of the committees do and who is currently on them.
Thank you. Moving on to item E, a COVID update.
So this update, one of the good things about this page is it updates live from our nurses that come into that. And so as we looked at last week, we ended the week with 94 positive cases throughout our school community, which some of those go back to weekend pieces. As we look at this week, we're at 71 so far. And that number, I suspect, will, as we go through the week, continues to be very high at the beginning of the week, and our numbers after we go through pool testing seem to come down until we hit the weekend cycle again, and that shoots back up. And that seems to be the piece that just continues to play itself out Monday. Sunday through Tuesday, Wednesday seems to be high. Thursday, Friday, it starts to come down because you've gone through your pool testing cycle, and then you play that back again for the weekend. Now, one of the things that you'll start to see, to see changing is the close contact piece, because now the SOP has changed close contacts, and so we won't be keeping that number like we were in the past, because again, that, so much of the close contact piece is driven by middle school and the fact that they're switching classes inside and out and going to different places, that you'll see that number change. Questions on COVID?
Questions from the board, Superintendent Ray, based on the COVID update, there was a memorandum in your packet and also updated on the website. Questions? No questions. Moving on to item F, a budget update, informational. Superintendent Ray?
Yeah, so just to give everybody an idea of where we're at, where we're at, and what the timeline will look like. So principals have those budgets into Jason. In the next week, we was actually hoping to spend a little bit more time on budget this week, but things got derailed a little bit based on other needs. We'll start reviewing those line by line internally, and then over in the, I would say by the second week, or third week of January, we'll start having principals come in to go through those budgets line by line, still putting some final touches on student enrollment. Still putting some final touches on student enrollments for Thornton Academy to make sure that we have things in place and that we've looked at and reached out to all of those other little schools that we can have so that we have a good estimate with the budget, with the buffer built in. On top of that piece, we need to look at power, electricity, and some of those gas rates as those fluctuate a little bit. Again, looking at electricity rates, those ones are a little bit of a bigger concern because if you look at your household electrical bill, you'll see that you've had that rise. And then we will be planning for, which will come through infrastructure committee, but I would like to see us be able to have that same goal of putting at least another half a million dollars into the budget for capital improvement projects. I think at a first glance at the budget, very, very preliminary on the expenditure side. I think we're feeling pretty good about things. What we then have to look at is obviously the other side of the coin, which is revenue. This will be an opportunity for the first time in many years where we actually start the year with some carryover funds because we had a positive end to last year. So I think the pieces that you look at that set us, set ourselves up for hopefully what will be a successful budget season is, one, starting with a positive balance. That's always a good one. Number two, recognizing that we used all of that additional subsidy last year to pay down what we owed back to the city, almost a million dollars, so we're using that additional subsidy that we're receiving this year to pay that off, which means that we didn't have expenses that used any of that subsidy. So if, and I say if, subsidy levels stay at a similar amount, theoretically, we would be in a very good revenue space for that. So I'm hopeful that as we get to put things together, that we're going to be hopefully in an easier place as we start to have those discussions and not talking about huge -- hopefully we're not talking about huge gaps between expenditures and revenues. That's what we'd like to avoid. So very, very early, what I would expect for the finance committee is that by the end of January, early February, we will have those revenue pictures from the states, the 279, and that's when I would like to hand you guys your budget books and that pieces so that you're looking at both sides of the coin at one time, which will put us on pace for, I think the charter says sometime in March or some very -- it doesn't even have like the third Monday in March type piece, that sometime in March, we have a conversation with the city council on that piece, but we'll have plenty of time between now and then to get our picture together and to figure out where it is. We are planning, I believe, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, we put 10% in for health insurance this year, which is probably a little bit higher than some of the other years, but a little bit nervous on, as you think about health insurance costs, nothing like a pandemic and what those costs, that scares me a little bit of what those rates could do because it's so unpredictable, and there's nothing to compare that to from in the past. So feeling pretty positive about budget at this point.
Thank you, Superintendent Ray, and that language is in section 602 of the charter that says at a city council meeting in March of each year, the city administrator and school board shall each submit to the city council their respective budgets.
Yeah, you have four of those in March, right? So we just got to narrow down which one.
Any questions for Superintendent Ray on the budget? No questions on the budget. Moving on to item 13, any other information this evening? No other information this evening. Brings us to item 14, executive session. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Mr. Mayor?
School Board Member LaFortune?
I move we enter executive session for labor contract negotiations under one MRSA 405-6D with possible action.
Motion's been made by School Board Member LaFortune. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that School Board Member Archie? Thank you. Any discussion on entering executive session? Roll call vote. School Board Member Archie?
Yes.
School Board Member Preble?
Yes.
School Board Member Richard?
Yes.
School Board Member LaFortune?
Yes.
School Board Member Gale?
Yes.
School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 7:41 p.m. Executive session will be downstairs in the conference room, downstairs in the conference room.
Okay, it looks like we're back from executive session. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Motion's made by school board member Truman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by school board member LaFortune. Discussion on exiting executive session. Roll call to exit. School board member Archie.
Yes.
School board member Preble.
Yes.
School board member Richard.
Yes.
School board member LaFortune.
Yes.
School board member Gale.
Yes.
School board member Truman.
Yes.
School board member Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero at nine forty-five. Any report from executive session?
No report from executive session.
No report from executive session. Brings us to item fifteen on the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Made by school board member LaFortune, second by school board member Truman. Any discussion on adjourning? Roll call vote to adjourn. School board member Archie.
Yes.
School board member Preble.
Yes.
School board member Richard.
Yes.
School board member LaFortune.
Yes.
School board member Gale.
Yes.
School board member Truman.
Yes.
School board member Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to adjourn at nine forty-six. Have a wonderful evening everyone.